It's June 12, 2024. It is 6:35 PM and we are at the room 520 of the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson, Ms. Veronica Dabenees, our clerk Jim Kabachi, my far left, my left, Mr. Richard Sample, myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Khlas, also present, our commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, and Mr. Josh Flaherty. He's an assistant town planner.
Land use coordinator.
And coordinator. And we have on Zoom Sonia. Before we go forward, I guess, quick announcement, Mr. Our clerk gonna say, announce it.
Okay. So, knowing that we were gonna have a captive audience with many of the major players in applications this evening, the chairs asked me to express the need to put in a proper application and with proper time. Everything's on the website. I believe it's gonna, right now, I've got all the links if anybody doesn't know how to get to them. When you apply for an appeal or a variance or a special permit, there's a set of instructions that are handed to you that day. You need to read them. When you come for site plan review, you should read Article 14 and its completion and then go to Article 15, which is site plan review, and make sure that everything that site plan review calls for in the zoning bylaws is addressed. Going forward, the board's gonna be a little more anal about telling people, "Sorry, this is an incomplete application. Go home, come back when you're finished, get the rest of your documents." Obviously, we've had a few things come back to bite us. That's the reason for this announcement. So, we're trying to, knowing that, knowing that we have a few members of the community that represent the largest portion of our appeals present tonight, we're doing it at this meeting, but we'll be, we'll try to be consistent. If you come into a meeting and you hand us a new set of plans, here, I didn't get a chance to bring these into Sonia, but here, here's a set for you, that's great, we'll take them, but we won't make a decision that night. We will need everything turned in, in time, for there to be time for any new plan to go down to the building commissioner and be reviewed in case it changes his reason for approving or denying something, and then come back up. It's not fair to the building commissioner to have a set of plans thrown at us. It's not fair to us as a board to look at a set of plans and five minutes later be expected to make a decision. So, what we're doing is we're letting it be known that we won't. If we get a new set of plans or a change of plans on the evening of your hearing, there won't be a decision that evening. If they're not in two weeks in advance, so that there's a week, and adequate time, basically, is what we're asking for. Thank you.
All right. That being said, we won't even make decision, we won't even discuss it. We're gonna send you away. It's gotta be a week prior, so Wednesday, if we ask you to bring something up, or you say you wanna come up with something, it's gotta be in next Wednesday, not, not a minute before, or not three days, or not next Thursday, Wednesday, so we have a week to review it. And like Jim said, we're gonna be anal about it, we won't hear the case. But tonight is an exception. Let everybody know, site plan review, everybody has a plan review, has to have periodic inspection by our town council. If we don't have all the inspections at the end, we will not get a occupancy permit.
By a town engineer.
By, yeah, I'm sorry, I said town, town consulting engineer, Allen and Major. That being said, we're gonna start with the minutes for 520 to 24.
Reviewed and acceptable to me.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. 2-18 Dakota Partners, 3102 Cranberry Highway. Philip here. Can you come forward, Phil, please? See it quick. All right, council, name an address, please.
Thank you for the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, 86 Willow Street, Yarmouth Port, for the applicant.
Okay, very well. We reviewed all the inspection. We're just here quick for Mr. Cordeiro.
Phil Cordeiro, Allen and Major Associates, spelled C-O-R-D-E-I-R-O. Mr. Chair, I've reviewed all of the plans that have been provided by the applicant relative to compliance, as-built compliance based on the approved design drawings, and they are in substantial compliance at this point. I've made several requests of them over the last few weeks to make revisions to the plans in terms of providing spot grades, additional information. They have done that. It could benefit from additional spot grades, but not to the point where it's not readable at this point. The applicant also submitted some landscaping plans as part of their compliance documents. We do note there are a few discrepancies in the landscaping plans from the original permit approval from this board, so it's something that we'll note, we'll put on record, and submit it back to you to provide to the applicant.
Okay, very well. So, that's for the first three buildings, right? Phase one. We're talking about only phase one?
Yes.
So, phase two, we're gonna make, once you guys come up with phase two, we're gonna make sure everything in hand. We won't leave anything behind. Okay, so whatever, that's landscape, any discrepancy you have to address, okay? Any board questions?
Are we talking?
I'm not gonna call by name. Any board question can jump in.
Are we talking phase one and three, or just phase one right now?
The three buildings.
There's three buildings and occupancy is desired for phases one and three, correct?
That is.
But the changes were involving only the area of phase one.
Excuse me, my name is Mark Pallone with Dakota Partners. The, we're here for phase one and phase three. Phase one has two apartment buildings and a clubhouse, that's just three buildings, and then phase three has one apartment building.
So, you're doing phase one and phase three?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's why we have all the reports emailed and everything, and what, that's what the engineer talking about?
That is correct.
Any input? Input, nothing?
My only input would be what we've, what I've said on one-on-one meetings outside this meeting. I think it's absurd for this board to think that we're smarter than a guy that went to college and studied to have a stamp and have the ability to put a stamp on a set of plans. So, we've always said, we wanna see a set of plans with a stamp. If there's a set of plans that the town engineer has said it's in compliance and it's got a stamp on it, that's what we're looking for. If it doesn't have a stamp, and I'm saying this to you guys, but for the room as well.
Understood.
If it doesn't have a stamp, it's hard to say okay, because things can change. That's, that's all I have to say.
And the plans that I think Mr. Cordeiro referred to since the previous meetings with you folks were all stamped and certified.
I saw, I saw emails where people are saying, "I'm the architect, I'm the landscape engineer, I'm the," you know, I, I've seen the emails.
All right, very well. That being said, if everybody on board, you could start with your inspection with the building department. All of, do we have a motion to, to, to grant?
We, we?
To grant the occupancy.
Not the occupancy, for them, our part, so they could go.
Permission to go for occupancy.
Yes.
Correct.
Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
We have a motion by Jim, second, anybody?
I'll second.
Second, Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Abstain.
And myself, as aye. So, 4-0-1. Okay, 4-0-1.
0-1, and that's to proceed with?
For building department, all the, whatever they need for inspection, fire, everybody else. And that's Rich, no abstain.
I'm putting Turner instead of building department.
Okay, very good, very good.
It's easier to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 49, thank you. Continued public hearing, 40?
I have hard copies of everything we submitted, if you want them.
They're the same ones, right?
Yeah, I'll put them in the, I'll, I'll put them in the folder.
49-23 Del Meyer, 504 Main Street. All right, council, public hearing still open.
Absolutely. So, you should have in your file a withdrawal.
Just your name for the record.
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street, Morton's M-O-R-T-O-N.
Yep.
Sorry, Siri. So, today, we're in front of you. We did submit a withdrawal of this petition, 'cause you'll be happy to hear my client purchased this parcel, so this parcel now is in compliance and does not have a merger issue. But I do think, and this is up to the board to make a decision, that perhaps there should be something of record.
642 P.S.
Sorry, I don't know why that's happening. Just to show the decision in regards to, 'cause if there was something in the future where this parcel gets sold, you wanna show that it can't have another building on it. So.
We will, we, would you, you gonna withdraw, or we?
I already withdrew, May 15th. You should have it in your file.
Okay, so we'll make a decision for the record that, that if any time that lot that's purchased with the deed showing, book 58895, page 198, if ever gonna be buildable, the house, the apartment gotta be decommissioned?
Yes.
Okay, Sonia, just type it properly and/or?
Do you wanna have, do you wanna have the attorney draw it up for us, or?
I think so, 'cause she had go on both, both parcels, 'cause we have two separate deeds, so.
You're gonna?
I can draft it, and then when we record it, we're gonna reference both parcels, so.
Why don't you draft, email it for us?
Of course.
And we'll sign. So, that being said, can we get a motion to close that part?
So moved.
Any discussion on that? Here, none, second? Anybody on second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it's closed. And now, the wish is to accept the motion to withdraw, right?
So moved.
Oh, okay. I think you should make a decision, though, that can be recorded.
Okay, motion to?
Is there a decision to be made, excuse me? Is there a decision to be made, because now the parcels have been joined?
Yeah, so I appealed the building commissioner's letter, so I think the decision could reference one of his cures.
Right.
I'm just trying to think about the fact that my client shouldn't have to go back to planning board to combine the lots.
We'll make a motion to overturn this, his decision based?
Based on the fact that the lot's now in compliance.
In compliance.
Wasn't when the letter was written.
So, a title attorney would see that and?
Right.
It would protect the town moving forward.
Plus, you're gonna send that decision?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll, we'll sign and?
And you can, so you can include that in your?
All right, any question on that decision?
How can we have a decision after a withdrawal?
It's not a withdrawal.
You don't have to accept.
I didn't withdraw.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can somebody make that motion?
So moved.
So moved by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, that's 5-0-0. Okay, we go to 386 Main Street, 21-23 McEwen, 386 Main Street.
Yep, that's my file again, Attorney Jillian Morton. You'll be happy to know we did do an application to the planning board for a determination. Your last hearing, you deferred this to the planning board per the statute, that they need to make a vote, that you are able to look at it again. Does that all make sense? Okay. So, we submitted everything to them. Now, I was just at planning board in their next schedule. I don't think we're gonna get on, and maybe Ms. Reposo can, but they have a pretty full schedule, so I guess we should keep this open. I don't think we're gonna get on to the 20.
Okay, so you're going to the planning board, and what's your decision deadline for that? What's the decision deadline? Is it the McKenna one, McEwen?
Yeah, I don't think it necessarily had.
3824.
Wasn't there a decision made, and she's appealing the decision?
No, we reopen, she, we wanna reopen.
We didn't reopen it?
We're waiting for her to go to the planning board to get an approval.
Yeah.
All right, you have under 38, that's, no, this is?
38, no.
No, that was the?
Yeah, I think it's a prior.
It was 32824, but it must have extended.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it got extended.
I think we left that one open, so let's get an extension till?
Okay. So, I'm thinking I will be able to hopefully get on the planning board for July 8th, so then I would be requesting a continuance for a hearing here, July 10th, and then decision deadline, what, a month after that?
Let's do decision deadline to September 11.
Okay.
And you wanna come back when?
July something. I mean, I think July 10th, but I'm not sure. I have probably a feeling that it's gonna get continued from planning board after, they're gonna want, I don't know, I don't think I'm gonna have a firm decision after July.
So, you want 24 or 10?
Probably is gonna be, go a couple meetings.
So, I'm still, I'm still confused.
You want 10 or 24?
24, just to be safe, yeah.
I'm still confused, because I thought that we made a decision, and her going to the planning board is for us to reopen it, and here, re?
If the, if the planning board?
There's nothing to continue.
Right, if the, no, no, if the planning board allow repetitive petition, she'll come back, and we're still open. She'll come back.
She'll come back, and we'll reopen it?
It is open.
Didn't we make a decision? That's why she's?
That we made a decision, that she goes to the planning board.
There was, yeah, so the timeline, there was a 3-0, two abstains, so it was technically denied from not super majority. And then I came back for reconsideration. You guys made the determination that I need to go to the planning board, so that's what I'm doing. So, it's the reconsideration, it is, though, the second hearing should, in my opinion, stay open, because the butters have been notified.
So, you did a notification on the reconsider, okay, I get it now, all right, now I'm with you.
Yeah. And they'll get notification about the planning board as well. We've submitted everything to Ms. Reposo, so they'll know when that is.
July 10th and September 11th.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, any questions on that? Anybody, board member? Okay, so, let's get a motion on that.
Motion to continue, keep this open continuously through July 10th, move the time for the?
To, to July 24.
Move the time for the board to make a decision by September 11th.
Right, but she wants to come back July 24.
Oh, not 10?
I, I have the planning board on the 8th, so I?
Okay, 24, July 24.
Yeah, just to be safe.
24, okay. Do I have a second on Jim motions?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So, we see on 24.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3090 Cranberry Highway, La Sarda. Phil, you wanna come forward, please? Thank you.
Do we need to, do we need to see the existing plan? Anybody, is everybody?
What do we have?
I got the folder here, 54.
So, since last hearing, we submitted a revised plan last week on the staff. I have hard copies to show them.
Can I have the, the large one?
Yes.
And just go state your name, Brad, for the records. Thank you.
So, this was, this was submitted in time, you're just giving us a better copy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Is this, this, is this is now different, or this is it again?
Yeah, that's all.
That's it?
All right.
Is that what he said?
All right, name and address, please, and public hearing still open.
Robert Correia, 191 Main Street, I represent the petitioner.
Okay.
Enzio Lo Cerda.
Very well.
Good evening, Brad Bertolo, J.C. Engineering, B-E-R-T-O-L-O.
Okay, so, where did we leave it last time? You had some ballards to install, you have some TSS removal.
So, we addressed all the comments from the peer review engineer. I had spoken to him earlier this week. There are two semi-outstanding questions he has. I'll briefly go over them, and then he can confirm. We did address any, any drainage comments, including TSS removal. We added bollards on the left side of the building to prevent vehicles from driving through. We did provide a snow storage area in that area. I believe there's enough room to push, push some snow through the bollards.
How about the right side?
The right side, we removed the driveway. We're getting rid of that gravel driveway. We're gonna regrade it, loam and seed it. We, we thought it might be wise to leave that open, so that the property owner does have access to his structure. Let's just say he had a delivery of some sort and go through the back door. We, we're perfectly comfortable with a condition that states no vehi, vehicle storage north of the parking lot or off the pavement, if that's acceptable to the board.
But if it's grass, how you gonna drive on it?
Well, it's, you know, you can drive on grass, everyone drives on grass. It's just not something that's gonna be very frequent. We just felt it might be prudent to leave at least some.
You just don't wanna put bollards in front of it.
Just on that side, and maybe, maybe a fire.
We just leave for the right to, under very unusual circumstances, drive on. We don't expect to have any vehicles parked there, any vehicles displayed there. We welcome a condition to that in that respect.
Well, next year, in the, in the renewal inspection, if we, if we see cars on the commissioner, and next year, when you go renew your license, we, we'll have the right to stop and to see if we see cars there.
That's exactly what I told Brad. That Paul's up and down the highway, he sees a violation in that respect, and he's gonna report it.
Phil, issues?
So, Mr. Chair, we did review what they submitted. They addressed all the drainage-based comments. I raised the same issue with the applicant's engineer on the additional bollard that you're speaking about tonight. I think they should add it, but I'll defer to the board. The two remaining issues that I would have for the board in my final letter is there are two notes on the plan that the applicant has added about milling and overlaying the parking lot if necessary, and then also some replacement of concrete at the building if, if required. I don't like to recommend plans that have if-then statements, 'cause it's unclear who's determining that, when is it happening. So, I did speak with the applicant's engineer and said, you know, can we just go ahead and repave the parking lot? It can certainly use it. Can you replace the concrete? He consulted with the applicant. They have elected to leave the plans as they are and defer the opinion to the board, or the decision to the board. But my recommendation, should you approve them with that language on there, is to add conditional clarity to say, who's determining this, when is it being determined, and how do we implement it?
And you recommend that we put ballards on the right side?
I, I do, I do. We, I, I had raised the same with, with Brad when we spoke earlier in the week.
How do you feel about a bollard that would slide into a, like?
Removable bollards are, are fine. You know, it gives them the opportunity, if they need to get around the building for any reason, they could just take it out.
I'm thinking of plowing snow, you know. Yeah, the bollards say, "Stay out, no cars go back there," but then, you know, you get a heck of a storm.
We don't really need access.
You wanna plow snow.
I have no problem with that. Also, as to the concrete ramp, I've talked with Mr. Lo Cerda, he has no problem doing what the town engineer would like done.
And?
The other issue I think we have is the parking lot repaving, is what we'd like to do is, is reseal it.
We'll see what the board decides on that.
All right, good enough.
Do you have landscaping contractor, contract?
Landscaping plans prepared.
How about contract? Who's gonna maintain it?
I don't think one's been picked yet for, we're not at that step.
Why, you're gonna need one. It is in our bylaw for two years.
Oh, that's, that's, that's fine.
We're gonna need one for the record.
Yeah, we, once, we're not gonna move forward with a, with the project and picking contractors until we have a permit. And then once, before, I guess, whatever permit's necessary to move forward, at that time, we'll provide whatever contractors are necessary prior to construction.
Yeah, by law states that you have to have a contract for two years prior for us to do, make a decision. Section 107, oh, I believe, 1070, two-year contract.
I have my file with me, but I, I know it says we have, it has to be monitored for two years.
Right.
It's the first time I've heard, is have to tell you who the guy is who's gonna be doing it and monitoring it.
Well, you gotta pick a contractor. Well, he's looking, what do you, how you feel about the pavement, Richard? Pavement and concrete and the bollards, removable bollards on the right?
So, my, my thoughts of the ballards, is anybody, let me know, like, I'm not familiar with the removable ones, but if we get a snowstorm and we get it's cold, are these things gonna be frozen in the ground to be just a useless, on that day, to remove snow, to remove them?
I'm more concerned with the?
I'm just, I'm just asking if that's?
You may be right, you may be right.
Gonna be a problem.
I'm not as concerned with the snow thing, because we can push up against the, them on both sides, left and right. So, I don't think we have a problem with snow removal. I'm more concerned with if we need access to the rear of the property, which we could for any number of reasons, would like to have it without having permanent structures that we can't remove.
Yeah, I, I know that you, about the snow removal, and it's supposed to be easy, but when you got cars in there and everything else, I think you're gonna have a harder time.
That's gonna make it hard, but on the main parking area.
Yep.
No matter, no matter where the snow goes, that, the fact that it's, it's a fairly intensive use of the property is gonna make it difficult to remove snow, but that's his problem.
So, and the whole idea of the ballards is just to keep people from parking on that area?
That's my understanding, and, you know, we'll?
That's a where, that's the answer, water department recharge area, so we can't take a chance. If there's any leak or anything in the back, it's not treated. That's why we'd like not to see cars in the back. If it was in West.
We're not gonna put cars in the back.
Okay, that's why we want the ballards installed.
And I would say typically, you're gonna have notice of a big snowstorm. They don't usually just happen without us knowing. They advertise a week at a time.
I agree with you.
Just to go back on the landscaping?
Yeah.
1071 states that the board may require one of the following, two-year guarantee on all new plant material, which is a note on our plan. It states, "All plant material shall be guaranteed for a period of two years," and explains that if anything dies, gets replaced.
Okay.
Or require the developer to post a bond, or require the developer to maintain a long-term maintenance agreement with a landscape company. So, there's three options. So, I think the note on the plan covers that it's gonna be at least two years looked at, and if there's any problems, vegetation will be replaced.
All right. Anyway, we have a yearly inspection now, if it's, we're gonna crack down on these things. If they're dying, we want, the commissioner will not sign off and ignore occupancy. All right, back to the ballards. I like, I, personally, I want to see one removable one to the right. I wanna see asphalt and concrete, resurface and concrete. Oh, you didn't say your opinion. Concrete and asphalt, you wanna see, or no?
Yes.
I could accept, I could accept not requiring it, but I, obviously, brand-new paving would look nice.
That's, that's why we offered to reseal it, so it's, it'll be a consistent look with the new pavement, so it'll, it'll?
The parking's a mess, it won't pitch properly to the manholes.
That's, that's why portion of the parking lot is being regraded, so that is being done. So, the, the, the up there, up gradient, I guess, parking lot already drains southerly, we're regrading a portion of the parking lot to make sure that it's?
So, what's the, what's the current condition over there? I, I've turned around in there 100 times and couldn't tell you.
It's not bad, it's, it's not, not the best.
And some of it, you've gotta dig up to, to regrade anyway?
That's all getting rebuilt, full, full-depth construction on about 50% of it. The parking lot's probably no different than what's out in this parking lot. There's some stress cracks here and there.
And then you're gonna seal it rather than repave it at a phenomenal expense. It's all gonna be striped anyway.
Yeah, there's a picture of it, yeah. I, I'd, I'd, I'd be okay with, you know, where they're already doing an extensive amount of work, they're, they're gonna improve this property considerable. I see a lot of spider cracking here, but that's probably where you're gonna dig it up anyway.
The worst area is getting dug up for drainage. I agree with that. There's, there's a couple areas already patched, and that, that's all gonna get redone.
Where they, we don't, we'll seal. You know, fill the cracks and seal over it.
I wouldn't, I would not, I would, like, I'll repeat myself. I'm sure I'd love to see brand-new paving, but I'd be, I'd be fine with reseal.
If, if I may, we gotta make our answers short, because otherwise, we're never gonna finish.
Okay.
We got, that, we're not gonna finish on this page.
I'm fine with resealing.
Troy?
I can deal with the resealing.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm no with it, so you might, and Richard's no, it's not gonna pass. So, what you wishes?
It's up to the board. They can make the, make the condition, and we'll just have to go with it.
All right, very well. So, anyone else, anybody in the audience for this matter, in favor or against? Okay, I hear none. I guess we're gonna move to close. I guess we're going to move to close.
So moved.
Moved to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, close. Now, discussion on the grant. How are you going to, what's the motion?
So we're going to have, how many bollards? Three or?
The four, there's four on the left.
Nine.
We're going to motion, the motion is going to be to grant based on the plan stamped by J.C. Engineering and revised on, when's the last revision? On?
Six.
June 6/24 with the additional condition. So that's how you guys going to state it, whoever going to make the motion?
I think Veronica's in the process.
Well, June 6th. So we're going to include the landscaping plans from the 15th though, because, right, that's, you don't have anything, this is the 15th, you say the 15th, the top one says the 6th.
I think the revision date.
What, 6/6/24 revision?
Yeah, the revision date's over.
Oh, where is it? Oh, sorry. Yeah, I see it. Okay.
Who's making a motion?
I will make a motion.
Just to clarify, I think this is, who votes? One for site plan review, one for special, is that special permit?
We're voting for two different things is what he's asking.
Yes, that's, I was going to raise that issue, it is.
Right.
We need, we need site plan review, we need a special permit to have used car sales.
Right. Okay, so, but it's all, it's pretty much all in one. All right, let's stick on the site plan. What's the motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve as presented with the revision date of 6/6/24.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if the bollards say they're removable on the plan.
Not this one, we're not going to, I, I, I suggested the one, this one not removable, the one on the right to be removable, where the easement is.
One over here, that's removable.
So with an addition, because I don't see one on the right side.
That's correct. With the condition to add on this one.
We have a part of removable on that side.
Okay.
But you just drew it in there, it's not on the.
Yeah.
And replacement of the car, the pavement.
Replacement and reseal.
You want it repaved or you want it sealed?
Well, I don't think it's going to pass if I see reseal, so.
Oh, yeah, you're right, sorry. You're right, so it's going to have to be repaved.
So repaved.
Repaved.
Repaved and the concrete redone, the sidewalk redone, and the ramp, the concrete on the front. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. On a special permit for the, that's the site plan review, on the special permit for the dealer license, what's the wishes?
Motion. Motion to grant.
Motion to grant by Jim, for a class-two license, I should say. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Dakar is, and you.
Will, would you like us to add a revised plan to address those comments, or does?
Yeah, and then send it to Mr. Carrero, he'll, he'll give us the, okay, we go sign, sign that thing before, you got to send it before Wednesday because we've got 14 days to go to clock. All right?
So, I have a question on the vote. On the site plan, did you say aye or deny?
Aye.
Okay, so it's.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dakar is. Good luck. Let's move to Mr.
What's this one?
T-624. That's Lasorda. Okay, special, Tito Road. Tito Road, who's here for Tito Road?
Those pictures came out of that package.
Okay.
They're all going in the same folder.
Okay, they'll all end up at home.
That could be a fun night.
Mm-hmm. They're going to go to.
Her?
Anything else? That's everything?
Um.
Yep.
It is.
I can put this folder away. Thank you.
All right, on three. Okay, name and address for the record.
Charles Morris, 13 Ledgewood Drive, Dover.
All right, guys, want to give us some quiet here?
Dover, Massachusetts.
Thank you, sir. You going to be testifying, sir? Mr. Engineer or lawyer?
Mr. Youngquist, Outback Engineering.
All right, very well. Public hearing, public hearing's still open, so where we are.
So we made some changes to the plan per the comment letter from the review engineer, Alan Majors. Because this is an existing building, an existing parking lot, we did add, we asked for some waivers, just because of the things we can't do without tearing down the building and ripping up the parking lot.
Okay.
And I know a big thing was landscaping, so we provided a land, we have a landscape architect at Outback Engineering, and they went out, visited the site, added sheet two to our two-page plan set to have landscaping. So we're providing some, some slower shrubs and flowers up front, trying to break up the view of the building, but still provide view from Tito Road. And then also, on the southerly lawn line, we're providing some larger bushes, trees, provide screening so you can't really see it from the main road, Route 28 out there. And then that blends into the existing trees that are existing along that southerly parking lot edge. On the northerly parking lot, we're providing, or the applicant is providing a fence, a screen, vinyl fence, not chain link fence with screens planted, put into it to provide that. And that part of the property to the north is undeveloped at this time. There's nothing there, it's just all gravel. I think they have, the owner has some boats and things parked there, but it's owned by somebody else.
Where's the landscaping plan?
Sheet two. Plan set revised on 6/5/22/24.
Anybody has sheet two?
I only have one.
A1, hang on. F1, what's that?
That one there, yeah?
So this is the blow-up of the entrance.
Yep.
Providing the lower shrubs and flowers along the front, so you can still see the building, but it pretends up the view. Then along the southerly boundary here, we have our taller shrubs, and then we get into some trees to blend into the tree lines, which kind of gradually builds up, and that provides your screen from the main road below. And then we get some taller vegetation over here. And we can only, we're just providing it on our property, as you can see, there's a large space of town property in the right of way, but we're not proposing anything there, because that's the town property.
Okay.
And all the plant species we proposed are, are low maintenance, generally native to the area, drought resistant, not something that requires a lot of water in front of maintenance because obviously it's.
When was your plan stamped? The date?
This was stamped on 5, the revision date's 5/20/22, and this was stamped on 5/28.
So 5/22/24, okay. Mr. Fell, which one I hear from our town council, he reviewed that plan? All right, what do we got on that?
So, Mr. Chair, we've not seen these plans. We have no record of the transmittal on them. We didn't get them from the office, I don't see them on the town's website. We have not had a chance to review what Mr. Youngquist was describing to you.
But you said you had some, some comments prior.
Yes, we did. So to go over the comments prior, the original application was extremely light on information, it didn't provide a lot of narrative to compliance with the very articles that you were discussing at the beginning of the meeting. So first and foremost, I would hope that they would provide additional detail on the application, on the site itself. There was no true existing additions plan, there were no utilities, there was very little discussion as to what they were planning to do in terms of improvements, landscaping being one of them. So even, so without all of that in place, we didn't really do a very in-depth peer review because there wasn't really much to look at, quite frankly. And then there was also some overlap of information they were providing from former, older plans that were prepared by Charlie Rowley, that were being used for this application. It was very unclear what they were intending to do. So we were asking for them to really just clarify, go through the application with a fine-toothed comb, go through the bylaw, and, and check everything, and then resubmit a nice, clean application.
Sir?
Yes, so that's what the 5/22/24 plans are, and there was a response letter dated 5/21/24.
There's a response letter from who?
Me, addressing all his review engineers' comments.
Did you see that one?
No, sir. We've not seen the letter or the plans or anything.
All right. Anyone in the audience for this matter, in favor or against? I hear none. I guess we're going to have to continue. And maybe you could contact Mr. Carrero, and you guys sort out what's the problems are. And we could still grant waivers, but unless we have solid comment from him, we can go any forward.
Right.
Any further? Is that fine?
Yes, so Phil, I will need your email.
Yeah, Richard, any comment on that matter?
Send it back.
Nope, I'm, I agree.
Okay, Troy?
I agree.
Veronica?
No comments.
Jimmy?
Motion to continue.
Okay, we got a motion to continue, and anything, if you, when do you want to come back?
Soon as possible.
Next hearing on 20, 26, you got to have everything by the 19 at the town hall, all the comments. So by next Wednesday, all your comments, and, so you got to have some comments and answers by the 19, download it to the site, to the engineer, the commissioner, to review everybody.
Can you be ready by the 19th Outback?
Well, everything's done, so.
It's already done?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you just got to.
Plans revised, response letter, everything's done.
Okay.
All right, what's the deadline decision on that? Veronica, did you see that one?
6/30. 6/4.
6/30, okay, so we got time.
6/30, that's this month.
That's pretty quick.
June 30. They're coming back to 26.
I think we should extend it, just, you never know.
Time for, we need, we need time, two weeks.
Meeting after?
After, we want to go at least to 15th of July for the decision.
Can you, we're going to require, you could verbally approve a deadline decision till July 25th. Would you agree to give us deadline decision until 25th? Yes?
Yep.
You just got to say yes, so.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. And you guys, chit-chat, and we'll, we'll see you on 26, all right? All right, can I get a motion to continue that till the 26?
I made that motion.
Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
A second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We'll see you on the 26.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Brad, before I forget, all construction phases, not the building, the site work has to be, we need to report with our town engineer every step of the way. And also during, if there's any construction to be done, as, after approval, we need phases, inspection for every phase.
On this?
Let's say you have to dig, put a manhole, so we need inspection on that by our town council. Not necessarily, you're going to have to.
Yeah, because the only thing we're really adding is landscaping.
But we'll see what happens, but I'm just saying, if there's some work to be done, it needs to be inspected periodically with our town consultant. Thank you.
Because Mr. Vaughn does not, no.
You keep, you keep saying council, but we know you mean.
Town consultant.
Consultant.
I don't feel good, sir. Thank you, we'll see you on 26. Now, we have Diamond Investor, 2785 Cranberry Highway.
We had a, we had electronic request for continuance on that, and we do have a copy of that.
For when?
June 26.
June 26, okay, do you got a motion for that, please?
So moved.
A motion by Rich to continue. Which one is that? 13-24 Diamond Investor, 2785 and 2785 R Cranberry Highway, to continue until the 26. Motion by Rich, right? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye. Troy, go ahead, sorry.
Agree to, like, as long as there is an extension on time, because we're talking about a 7/6, and if we come to the.
So you want to continue the decision?
Yeah, we need an extension for the decision deadline.
But they're not here to give it to us, so we have.
We can do that next meeting, because it's not the deadline by then.
Right, and if they're not here, we'll have to deny, or deny without prejudice.
No sense in giving them any, any deadline extension.
They have to be here to grant it to us. No, they give us that.
We can't make it a continuance on condition that that's extended?
No, they have to grant us that. They're not here to grant us this. On the 26, if they don't grant us extension until whenever you said, July something, either we're going to deny or deny without prejudice. Okay, so.
So we're continuing until the 26th. We're leaving the decisions by the board as it sits, but on the 26th, we'll request a continuance for our decision.
Correct.
Okay.
So all in favor say aye with Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, Anazi, aye, and Rich?
Aye.
Okay, so that's moved till the 24. 75. Sorry, we don't have helpers, so I have to take the notes. All right, where are we now? 1924-24 RJ Morrow, site plan for 21 Old Glen Charlie Road.
You guys need to see these again, do you remember it?
I remember it.
You want to see it?
I remember it.
Okay, you need to see it or you remember it?
I remember.
Any changes? If there's no changes, Casey comes up.
John? Can we put that AC on or no?
We can carry on for a short period, but it blows back into the microphone, so it makes it sometimes hard.
Put about the one in the back.
Can we just turn off the microphone near between Rich and Nazir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, public hearing still open.
Robert Terry, I represent the petition here.
Russell Morrow, petitioner, MOTTO.
Brad?
Bradley Bertolo, JC engineer, B-R-T-O-L-O.
Okay.
If the board doesn't have any higher copies of the site plan, I have copies if you want me to pass them.
We're really not here for a site plan, that was approved two years ago.
Not site plan.
Yeah, but it's dead. Site plan is dead, variance is dead, you signed from scratch. You need to argue a variance, counselor.
I have to argue a variance and.
For the fourth unit and a variance to separate the buildings, because zoning board can only grant you a three unit or a four or five in a, in a building. Separate them, it becomes a cluster development. If you want to do two separate buildings, you have to get that from planning board or we have to grant you a variance. So, you need to argue two variances, one of them for square footage, one of them to separate the building. That make sense to you?
No.
All right, the zoning board, let me explain, zoning, you, you, you asked the board to give you four units, right?
Yes, we're asking the board to give us a variance as to the total area. We show out about 3,000 square feet.
Right, we showed about 3,400.
Same variance you previously gave him and as a result of confusion, he didn't get it exercised in time.
All right.
So, same reasons.
I understand, but you need a variance to separate the building. The zoning board can only grant you a special permit even for three units in the same building, not two separate buildings.
The section 351 of the bylaw, multiple principal uses, says except in the R130 district, which this is strip commercial, more than one principal use may be established on a lot pursuant to a special permit issued by the Board of Appeals, more than one principal use and/or structure may be established in non-residential districts. We are in a non-residential district, which would allow more than one principal use and/or structure.
Which section is this one?
351.
Brad, can I have a copy of?
351.
Thanks.
Except the one. Okay, but if we go to the board, to the, to the table, it shows that residential. I just looked at it the other day. You see, three to four family dwelling in a new structure, in a new or existing structures, strip commercial, special permit zoning on a new structure or an existing structure, in one structure. However, I'll take your, your comment, it makes sense what you just said. What, what's the number of it, that section?
351.
351, right here, Naz.
All right.
Oh, you got it on the screen?
All right. In none, it says it can be separated with a special permit in the non-residential use.
Non-residential.
Like a village or the village district or.
Strip commercial.
Or strip commercial. Okay, I'm good for that. So, it's a special permit to separate it and a variance for the 4,000 square feet.
Yes, that's what we need.
3,000.
3,000.
And you had some objections last time, I think that resulted in, do you want to hear anything on those objections?
Sure, do we?
I've investigated those and.
I understand this, it, it's just a matter of the variance, I, I don't know how, we're gonna start with the board, how do you feel about granting the variance for the, for the fourth unit?
I, I, I don't have a problem with it since we did it before.
All right, Veronica?
I don't have a problem with it, I'm trying to remember why we granted it.
I believe the requirement was, we provide the drainage on plan to capture that runoff that's coming down the driveway, which is currently an issue with the gravel driveway. It's gonna be a paved driveway with drainage, so it really will correct the situation that the butters across the street have expressed concern about.
To me, that was the only real issue raised and that would be cured by doing this project.
I don't think that was the only issue raised, but.
Well, that had any merit, Veronica, I'm happy to address it, but I think Nazir wants to move along.
Yeah.
I did a lot of investigations this week on the other issues and they're, they're nonissues.
Jimmy?
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, Richard?
I'm good.
All right, so, so you, you saying you could construct this road according to these plans dated 4/124 revised on 4/1.
Revised on 4/1.
Revised on 4/124.
Answer is yes.
With the drainage, with the gutter drainage, all these things with the road, with the pavement, if we give you the variance, you will construct it this way.
Everything you told us do before is shown on these plans.
And you will do construction phases and all that.
Whatever inspections are necessary.
Yeah, drainage, the dents for the driveways, the.
Yeah, there's, there's details to show how, how the driveway is supposed to be constructed, so.
Regular, regular inspection, just like any site plan review. So, you need, we have to, Mr. Codero have to give us a report for every step of the
That's perfectly fine, that's acceptable.
All right, we go to the hard part. Anybody in favor of this project? I hear none. Against? Who was, who was here against this project?
Primarily Sharon Korean, her husband ran for selectman last time. She was here and she raised some issues.
Are you, you're not against, right?
Say that again.
Who's against this project?
I thought you asked who was against it last time.
No, 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 who's against this project right now here in this room?
Anybody here that wants to be heard tonight?
Anybody here wants to be heard? That's always good. Anything to add before we close?
You don't think so, they say the same exact thing you did two years ago.
Motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
We have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Close, wishes now.
Motion to approve based on compliance with the plans originally dated January 3rd, 2022 and recently stamped 4/124.
Okay.
Select to separate the vote?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
And can we add to that whatever provisions we had originally? Because I know that's when everyone, the neighbors were here discussing their concerns and we, I thought addressed them the first time, so, and I don't remember all the language we had in that original approval, but I, I would be comfortable if those were included in this.
I don't recall that, that was two years ago, I have no, I don't recall that.
Oh, I don't think anything, anything's changed from the original, is what I'm saying.
We do a whole new one, the original is dead, so any conditions you want to put, we put in this one.
Do we have the old decision here?
I don't have it, no.
No.
It would take me 10 or 15 minutes to get it out, but I do have it, if you want me to take the time to get it out.
No.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I just know we ha, we went over in detail and that's why we.
We wanted the site plan and drainage and all that, that was the detail we went on.
Everything you addressed then is in this plan. This is really the same exact plan.
This was supposed to be six units, it's four.
Well, not the original six unit plan, we get that.
That's what the.
Ultimately, the plan that you, you approved is this plan.
Right, okay, well, if the rest of the board's fine with that, I just know that, I just don't want this to be shortchanged because we're.
I hear you.
Haven't reviewed it the same as we did the first time.
All right, let's make a motion first and a variance, to grant the variance for the required square footage, okay? Who's gonna make a motion to grant the variance for the, for whatever?
I'll make that motion.
So, we have a motion by Jim to grant the variance for the square footage. Do I have a second on that variance?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The variance flies. Second motion is the special permit to separate the buildings, to have a separate duplex and.
Do we need to do that based on what he just said?
It says, it doesn't specifically state, but it does say special permit and that was how it was voted last time, so.
Okay, on the special permit and the site plan reviewed, signed by and revised on 4/124 and the special permit to separate the duplex from the, the existing duplex, can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by Jim on that, on, on, motion by Jim, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Jim, Rich?
Abstain.
Abstain. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, you get this special permit to separate them and the site plan and periodic inspection, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Don't let it collapse this time. 401 abstain, Richard?
Yeah.
Which one was that? 401, Rich. So, the variance is a 500. Okay. Oh, Jimmy, did I give you my list, buddy? I got one right here.
It's a, for plan.
A new public hearing, 20-24 Jennifer Zubia and Michael Foley for 33 West Central Ave.
Good evening, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects.
All right, we gotta read it for the record, you gotta wait, give us a minute. That's our sketch, all right?
Just wanted to get the dates on the plan and the decision and shouldn't have I got this in my hand.
Let me, let me write them down and I'll pass them, you read the note, how's that? All right, did you sign it?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
So, what do we got now, 2024? Okay.
There you go. Excuse me, Jim. I spoke to Sonia yesterday, the, the clients have wished to withdraw without prejudice.
So, there's no, I'll, I'll read it in and then we'll, all right, okay. No, no need to hand these out.
No need to hand those out. She, Sonia said she was gonna prepare a letter for you, for the board to sign.
Which one is this? Oh, okay, okay, I've got, I'm sorry, I didn't even read my own notes, this is central, 33 West Central.
33 West Central.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 20-24 for a special permit and/or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628 in Article 13 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Jennifer Zubia and Michael Foley, care of William Lockwood of Lockwood Architects of Onset, Mass., proposing interior renovations and second floor additions at the property located at 33 West Central Ave, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 1, Lot 677 in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, name and address, sir?
William Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, 2B West Central Avenue.
All right, so what's your wishes?
The owners vouched me to withdraw this request without prejudice.
Okay.
Without prejudice?
Without.
Okay. Anyone here for this matter in favor or against? I hear none. A board member, any questions? I hear none. Can we get a motion to close?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We just close that, right?
Yep.
Motion to withdraw without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Veronica, second by Jim, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, withdrawn.
Thank you.
What was JC 4124, his engineer?
The plan was drawn on January.
No, no, 4124.
4124 was the new, was the new stamp.
Okay.
The original plan was dated.
Okay.
January 3, 2022. Dated January 23 and updated on the 20.
All right, very well. Next hearing, 21-24 Heidi and Alan Bain, 16 Pleasant Ave. Do you want to read that further?
Let him, let him get the. This is you again, right? 2124.
I was confused for a second there.
Okay. I just want to get this other, this one signed and off my desk before I read it because.
Have them sign.
Yeah, can you two guys sign this one, because we're now three files away from it. It's gonna end up in the wrong folder. Building commission is gonna fire us all. Gonna have to set up an aquarium and put guppies in it.
We need more guppies.
All set? Thank you.
If Sonia's listening, me.
Yeah, I know.
Get away with it tonight, Sonia, lucky you.
She knows that if I have too many things going on at once, I, I, see, I even lost my rubber band. Okay.
Not bad, four more.
What is it? You found it?
What's up, Rich?
It's warm in here, maybe.
It does make a difference.
I wonder if there's a way we can turn all the venti thing so it don't blow on the microwave?
Can we turn that mic off?
On the microphone? I don't know what, huh?
If you try to like shoot it up or something, maybe.
Is this what, which one is it affecting?
It blows like right across this way, so it hits like multiple.
Let's turn it on and we'll keep turning the mics off until it stops bothering you, until it's.
Yeah, and then you get to deal with the select board, you say they can't hear any.
How was that? Better?
Okay.
I thought these little foamy things caused that's not to, not to do it.
Could have been the.
To a certain extent.
They might have had a heavy.
Do we need?
Storm, it's not gonna change anything.
Do we need bigger foamy things?
At that night at that meeting, you know, it might not have been the air conditioner at all. Somebody's on Zoom up?
So, maybe we should keep more on Zoom and if we have that going, sometimes it's a lot, it's hard for people to hear through these because they'll talk.
Okay. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 21-24 for a special permit and/or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628 and Article 13, Section 1352 and Section 1353 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Heidi and Alan Bain, care of William Lockwood of Lockwood Architects of Onset, Mass., proposing first and second floor additions and renovations at the property located at 16 Pleasant Ave, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 1, Lot 68 in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, name and address for the record?
Good evening, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, 2B West Central, offices at 2B West Central.
Is your mic on?
Got green light.
Okay.
It's the air conditioner. It's the air conditioner, Jim. Testing, testing one, testing two, that way go, that's a little bit better.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's hear what you do want.
Okay, again, Bill Lockwood from Lockwood Architects, offices at 2B West Central Avenue in Onset and with me are Heidi and Alan Bain, the owners of the property. We are here tonight to ask for your consideration and approval of additions and renovations to, to the property.
Okay.
Right now, it's, we have a, a building, a house, a cottage like many others in the, in the village, which are, which is small and the owners would like to make it a little bit bigger. It's a, it is pre-existing and non-conforming in the three principal areas that need to be considered, one being building coverage, where we're considering increasing it from 30, 30.19% to 30.23%, a negligible, negligible amount. The impervious cover, we're proposing to increase by about 2.5% or better and the FAR, we're proposing to increase by about 12%.
All right, so, so you're asking building coverage, lock coverage and FAR and the height and the height, you're good. All of these existing non-conforming.
These are all existing non-conforming, correct.
And you're asking to see if the board will feel this not so detrimental to go with a special permit on that?
That is our, that is our request.
All right, and on your plan drafted by Bremen, you're gonna put a deck in the back?
Correct.
Remove existing, what's that in the back?
There is a, there's an area of the building that infringes on the northerly setback. Little bump off the side of the building, we're proposing to remove that.
Yeah.
It's about sixty square feet. We're proposing to fill in a corner of the building on the southeast corner with about this, with about a similar-sized area.
Next to the deck, right?
Next to the deck, correct. And...
And what's that open existing on the left where the crushed stone is?
Yes, we're, right now, that's enclosed porch. We're proposing to open that up to be an, a covered entry.
Okay, and your FAR numbers, they, they... They're exact or they're off? Your FAR numbers, good?
I believe...
I mean, your data is proper? All your data's proper?
The data is proper.
Okay. Commissioner, you have any comment on that?
No comment.
All right. All right, there you hear it, so... So they need relief on coverage, building lot, and FAR. If the board feels so not detrimental, we go ask, we go on it as a special permit. While you guys thinking about it, I go to the public. Anyone in favor of this matter? In favor of this hearing? Anyone against? Okay, that's good. Anyone on Zoom? John? Okay. All right, question, Troy?
I don't have any.
Veronica?
I don't have any questions.
Jimmy?
Questions?
Nope, I drove by the site, walked it. Doesn't seem to be anything out of the unusual over there, so I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Before we go forward, you wanna add anything? Before we close?
We've tried to maintain the, the original structure, like many structures in Onset, the, it gets worse with each generation of addition, in terms of...
You're trying to maintain the character?
Yes.
Okay. Ma'am, you wanna add anything, sir, ma'am? You wanna say something? No, you're good? All right, that being said, let's move to close.
Motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay. Motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Nazee, closed. Okay, what's the wishes?
Motion to approve as presented by Lockwood Architects.
Do you wanna grant a variance or a special permit?
I wanna grant him a special permit.
All right. On the findings, Patty, please add this. The board finds it not so detrimental, we're gonna act upon it as a special permit. All right, so the motion to act on it as a special permit by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Also to be add, just to add to, Patty, please add to the note that because it's an existing non-conforming and we can get relief on 1353, 1353 Paul or 1352, the section, to act as a special permit.
Fifty-four, I think, but I'm not...
It should be.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Thirty-five, fifty-two, okay, so Patty, it's thirteen fifty-two. All right, that being said, now what's the wishes on the... What's the wishes on the special permit?
I thought we just voted it.
No, that we, we voted to go as a special permit.
Okay, so I vote to grant.
All right.
I motion to grant.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the special permit based on the plans, site plans stamped by, for Alan and Heidi Bain stamped by Bremen Engineering on 31424. So you have to go exactly by this plan, Mr. Lockwood, the site plan. Again, on the...
Uh, yes, sir.
On, on architecture plans stamped by Mr. William Lockwood, and it's dated or revised for 2024, correct? On April 2, 2024. So this is what's the motion will be based on. And the finding is not so detrimental to the neighborhood, please add that, Patty. All in favor on Jimmy's motion, do I have a second on that motion first?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor on that motion, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Sorry, Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, it carries, thank you. Have a good night.
One, one thing, you folks get to watch the gentleman across the street back all those boats into his yard? Does he have to use your driveway for, well, I don't think it'll fit, but it's a pretty amazing, how many cigarette boats he can fit in one yard?
He's got some big boats, but he's a...
Even better.
He and Kyle are great people, so.
Yeah, it's just amazing. I hope he doesn't buy you.
Review the, all the decisions tonight, make sure we review. Let me review it before you file it with the clerk, thank you. All right, we're gonna move to...
So we just voted that Bill Lockwood's a character and he's gonna maintain being a character? Something like that.
No objection.
No objection.
What's the public hearing for Michael Hogan? What's 21, what, 22-24?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
You have numbers?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
No, this one, yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, I don't have it on this one.
Oh, she teaches special, huh?
Oh, really?
Hey, you wanna use this?
Yeah, all right, we're gonna move to 23-24 for Michael Dwyer and Michael Hogan, special permit or a variance for Five Maple Street. Look at that, not funny? They don't have the numbers.
That is funny, here you go.
Because they were printed probably different times.
I believe where it says Michael and Michael, I think one is Margaret. Michael, on the names, so. Because I was just looking at the paperwork and I...
Michael or Mike?
Margaret and Michael.
And Michael.
Michael Hogan and Margaret Dwyer.
Oh, it's not Michael.
It's done right in the public notice. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 23-24 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Section 1352, and Section 1353, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Margaret Dwyer and Michael Hogan, care of William Lockwood of Lockwood Architects of Onset, Mass., proposing renovations and dormer additions at the property located at Five Maple Street, Wayham, Mass., Assessors Map 3, Lot 1016, in the MR30 zoning district.
All right, name and address?
Good evening, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, offices at 2B West Central Avenue in Onset. And together, with me today is Michael Hogan, one of the owners.
Okay. Let's see, what are you doing?
Okay. The existing site plan that you see there will be changed only with the addition of an exterior stair. All the other work will be within the footprint of the existing structure. We are planning renovations to the first floor, the enclosure of a small portion of the already screened-in porch, and the construction of some shed dormers on the northerly side of the property to create some headroom, and creation of a dormer on the southerly side over the existing porch roof to create some additional floor, floor space. The, like many cottages in the Onset area, it's very low headroom. And we're talking that low, eighteen inches or so. We just need to make it a little, little more livable. And also, like many cottages, it doesn't have a toilet, restroom, bathroom on the second floor. We're going to be putting one there. And we'd be looking for a special permit, as we believe that it...
All right, so you're, you're, you need the FAR variance or special permit, and you need a door, a dormer, you doing a dormer or a full shed?
A dormer or what?
Or a full shed.
You're doing a full shed dormer?
The square footage is the same?
The, the square footage increases. If you look at the, our drawing there, you'll see that the second floor plan shows a hatched area.
Yeah.
That, that hatched area is an increase in square footage.
All right, what are you, what's your note here, a dormer expansion? What's, is it a dormer? Is it an existing square footage you make upon a dormer or you making the space bigger?
It's existing square footage on the first floor, but it is not existing square footage on the second floor.
So on the second floor, you adding square footage?
That is correct.
So is your FAR reflects that?
The FAR does reflect that.
And why are you bringing up the, the dormer? Why are you saying the dormer less than four hundred, 193 square feet? So...
Oh, that's, there is a provision in the zoning for the increase without having to come before this board if you're using a dormer.
Yeah, dorm, but not...
We initially thought that this would qualify under that provision. We were disabused of that thought by the building commissioner, so we are here asking for the special permit.
Or a va, or a variance?
Or a variance.
If we feel so. So when, when you add a square footage, it's not a dormer? Dormer if you don't add square footage? You understand what I'm saying? So the dormer doesn't come in play?
Oh, I respectfully would...
You read the bylaw differently.
I, I, becomes a definition of what a dormer is.
Okay, but what, bottom line, your FAR reflects what your square footage are on the second floor?
Bottom line, the FAR reflects that.
Commissioner, you have any comment on that?
No comment.
No? All right, very well. Both questions, Troy?
No questions.
Veronica?
No questions.
Jimmy?
I think I'm all set, thank you.
Rich?
Nope, we went by it yesterday, walked around, see what they trying to get at, and I don't think...
I'm glad somebody goes there, I, I haven't had time to go by.
I don't have time either, but I made time.
I know, that's great, that's good you do. Anyone here wanna speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? All right, no, I guess. What's the wishes, board, you wanna close?
Yeah. So moved.
All right, we got a motion to close by Jim, this matter, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, it closes, 500. Wishes? Now you wanna treat it as a special permit or a variance?
If we can do a special permit, I'd, I'd move that we treat this as a special permit.
All right, so on section, we give him a relief for 1353 because the board, the Board of Appeal doesn't see substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so we will act on it as a special permit. That's the motion by Jim, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. Now we have a special permit, on the special permit, what's the wishes?
Motion to grant as per plans presented by Lockwood Architects. I've been looking for the date on the...
4/15/2024.
4/15/24.
Building Department Review.
Aye.
Correct, Mr. Lockwood? That's the revised plan? Or the signed plan when you signed it? For, just for future reference?
4/15 is the...
For future reference, Mr. Lockwood, you, put the date next to your signature here. Most engineer do, if you don't mind, this way you can reference to that. Okay, so on 4/15/2024, and for, for Mi, Michael Hogan and Margaret Dwyer for Five Maple Street, drafted, site plan drafted by Bremen Surveying and Associates, and it's dated...
4/15/24.
No.
No, that's the...
February 2, 2024. February 2, 2024, so that's the...
That's the site plan.
For site plan, and, and the finding is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and these are the conditions, and, and standard conditions. So that's the motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim? Aye. And Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, it carries, 500. Thank you.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna move to 24-24, Garabedian, 57 West Central Street. West Central Street or Ave? West Central Ave. Varujan Garabedian.
I'll read it in a minute. Thank you, sir. Somebody's gonna have to go down and do a lot of signing here.
You're doing good.
4/24. Forgot to get my dry cleaning today, I had to go with one of these heavy shirts. What come I get?
All this week. Allergy, it's fatigue.
What folders, then I get things on the list here.
I didn't think I was gonna wake up. I mean, Tuesday morning, I don't think...
It was those, it was the babies at the party, they were sick.
No, sir. Baby was sick, it made me sick?
Dana was sick and her daughter.
And kissing babies again? That'll get you sick, that'll do it.
You know, those little kids, they love to...
Yeah, yeah, they're hard to, they're hard to resist. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 24-24 for a variance or variances to Varujan Garabedian of 57 West Central Avenue, Wayham, Mass., proposing to install a six-foot-seven-inch by eight-foot-seven-inch sauna with electric heater and seeking relief from building commissioner's denial based on two structures that were erected in 2019 at the property located at 57 West Central Avenue, Wayham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 1, Lot 753, in the Onset Village 2 District.
All right, you name an address, sir?
My name is John Garabedian, and my address is 57 West Central Avenue, Onset.
All right, wanna tell us what happened?
Yeah, the carport was built approximately 2018 without a billing permit.
Yep.
I was, it was my understanding, 'cause there were no walls, it wasn't improper. The shower walls were built approximately the same time, but the shower has existed since I purchased the house in 2001. And all I was doing was putting walls around the shower.
So the, the sauna is installed, or you want...
Oh, no, no, there's no sauna. That's what, what I'm here, that's one of the reasons I'm here, for the variance to put a sauna within sixteen inches of the property line versus the five feet that I understand is what is the law from the property line. So that's one of the items that I'm requesting a variance for.
So I went out to look at this also, and he explained that he, he put the carport in and went around the shower, and then Mr. Turner came and found, found these structures there. So those are the extra homework, but he's going for the sauna right now. And I didn't see sixteen inches, didn't, didn't I see?
The plan, the, the plan...
I'm just looking, I'm going...
...point three feet, which is sixteen inches.
Well, when I was there with you yesterday, it seemed to me that the steel stakes with the ribbons on it were right up against the...
Right. Now, I put those in, and it was just, that was not going to be the exact...
Okay, I understand.
...of experience.
So you are proposing sixteen inches off of the line?
From the property line, and not the fence.
Thank you.
So you're here for one reason, only the sauna?
Incorrect, three reasons.
Right. Right.
To get a variance for the carport.
Yeah.
The walls for the shower.
Yeah.
Which I understand is in violation.
Yeah.
And for a variance for the sauna.
For the sauna.
Yeah.
Commissioner, is that true?
That's correct.
All right, very well. Uh, okay, uh, before I go to board, I see a lot of neighbors. Who's here in favor of this project? In favor? Okay, who's here against this project? All right, that's good. We'll get back to you in a minute. So, you guys all in favor? All right, so.
When I went to the, the property yesterday, there's a lot of neighbors going on, and they all had nothing but good things to say.
All right, good. So, how you feel about those variances? Uh, Troy?
I'm fine.
You what?
I don't have a problem.
Veronica?
It looks okay, I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Jimmy?
I'm all set.
Rich?
I'm good.
Yeah, I believe a lot being that small, it does dictate a hardship and unique, and I don't think it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, so therefore I think it meets statutory requirement of M G L forty A, section ten.
I would just like to say, though, that no cement pad should be poured for the sauna, something that's.
Okay.
Could be removed.
I believe he told me it was being built like a shed, right? And it, and it's gonna be incorporated.
The sauna is gonna be a post and beam built by Mr. Robert Meter, who is a registered Massachusetts civil engineer, a friend of mine. So, it is, my intention is to build, uh, put a pad, a cement pad, the size of the sauna, actually one inch short of the size of the sauna.
And you installed the sauna on it?
Exactly, yeah. It's not gonna be on sonotubes, and, you know, unless something were to.
I misunderstood you yesterday when you were, I misunderstood you yesterday when you were saying it was gonna be built, the guy was gonna build you a shed, but then he was gonna build you a sauna instead now, so I was assuming that it was.
He, the name of the company is Hanover.
Yeah, I don't care who it is.
Timber frames in Hanover.
Yep.
And, um, so that's the person, he builds, for the most part, he builds sheds, post and beam sheds and other items of that sort, small garages, et cetera, and I asked him, being a friend, could you build me a sauna? And he's had no problem, he has no problem with that, so that's.
Hanover, they, they make sheds and they deliver them on a truck and dump them in your yard.
Yeah, what he's gonna do is, he's gonna design it.
Yeah.
Build it.
Yeah.
Take it apart.
I get it.
It's coming to me, I'm gonna do whatever, finish work has to be done, because it's post and beam, then it's gonna be constructed on the premises, so it's gonna go through a few iterations.
So, I understand Veronica, Veronica's intention was, don't put a pad, and then in the future you could move it. He's asking for a variance, and once we grant that, it can stay there. So, am I, am I?
Yeah, I, I think it's got, at least fifty amp electric, it needs a pad, it's gotta be built right. And he can put it on the dirt. And if we grant in a variance, it don't matter, concrete or no concrete, it's the variance for setback.
Goes on. Yeah, we don't rescind it.
So, what do you think, Veronica? He's gonna have to put concrete under it. I understand if it's a shed, but not a sauna. He wants to raise it above ground so it doesn't rot all these things. The variance for the setback has nothing to do with concrete, whether you put concrete, steel, wood, anything, the variance for the setback. Makes sense?
Yeah, I, but, but something like that could be eas- a lot easier moved if, let's say the gentleman moves or is not there, and then.
But the variance go along with the property, even if he moves, stills there. It's gonna be recorded.
He might move, but the sauna is gonna stay.
It's gonna be recorded, it's always with the land, not for the gentleman, not for the owner.
That's gonna be the selling point. They're gonna buy the sauna and they get a house with it.
Think about it, uh, who's gonna speak in favor? Just one person is enough. Can somebody come forward, just state the name and speak in favor, please, if you want to speak in favor? Just state, you name an address and tell us that you're in favor.
Clare Ride, sixty-six Longwood Avenue, and are you asking me to speak only to the sauna or to the two variants?
For the whole project, are you in favor?
Okay, um, I am in favor, we are in favor, we are abutters, not direct abutters. Um, you've probably seen, the neighbors are in support, and particularly the people who abut him directly, Mr. Larry Whalen and also Richard McBride, who look almost directly into, you know, into the property. It's nothing that is going to be seen from our properties, it is nothing that detracts from the character of the neighborhood, um, there's no detriment, and relative to the other two things, the car, the carport and the sauna, the shower, um, when Mr. Garabedian takes a shower, we want him to have walls on his shower. But, um, I think I mentioned in my letter, these are twentieth century efforts to, you know, meet twentieth century needs in a nineteenth century neighborhood. Onset was not built around automobiles.
Right.
Or a lot of the needs we have, um, so we are in support, as are most of his, his neighbors.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And I might add that there are letters of approval by the, two of the neighbors, uh, three, letters of support by three, I'm sorry, um, that were included in the package.
Let the record show, there's three letters of support for this project. Uh, anyone else want to add anything, what the lady said, from the neighbors who's in favor? You want to add anything, sir, ma'am? No, you're good. All right, uh, board, anything before we close? Rich?
So, we're basically looking to approve three things with one vote.
Three variances, yes, three set, right, right? Three variances for the capo, the shed, I mean, the shower and the sauna.
You want to lump all three in one?
All one, as presented, all one, unless one of them you guys don't want, which one, you could say.
I have no objection to putting the three into one vote.
Oh, I have no objections.
All right, let's motion to close.
Move, so moved.
Second.
To close by Jim, second by Rich, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, I closed. Wishes.
Motion to grant the, as, as requested.
All right, we're motion to grant the variance as requested, and that stands for Varujan Garabedian, John Garabedian for fifty-seven West Central Ave. by Bremen Surveying and Associate LLC dated on, uh, April seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. So, the project will be built according to these plans, not even moving an inch, okay? You will have to build it according to these plans you presented.
Sixteen inches from the property line.
Whatever this plan shows, sir. I don't, I'm not gonna go over it.
Now.
Did you invite the whole neighborhood over for a sauna, or what?
No, but they keep coming to me, telling me that they are going to use it, and which is kind of.
It's good, all right, okay, public hearing is closed, we can't discuss. All right, so it's gonna be built according to these plans, and the variance, uh, meets statutory requirement of M G L forty A, section ten, uh, and with the standard conditions, so that's the motion by Jim. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor of the variance, of the three variances, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. It carries, you got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You follow up with Sonia, okay, sir? All right, buddy. Twenty-five dash twenty-four. What's her name? Dash twenty-four.
Twenty-five, Kimberly Lonas Schwab.
And what's the address?
And that's, um, one fifty Pinehurst Drive.
Okay.
You got something to turn in over there, mister?
I don't.
No, you got everything, I just don't want to get the, the folders mixed up.
I'm gonna say my body pen, oh, there it is.
I try to keep Sonia on our side.
What happened to Pleasant Ave., was that a pass, Bane?
Pleasant Avenue, Pleasant.
Five zero zero?
Yep, on special permit.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
You in Pinehurst?
Yes.
All right, all right, let's hear it, hold on, you give us a minute, okay?
My name, oh.
Everybody here for this matter?
There's one more.
Before I read this in.
And there's one more?
Yeah.
Is, is, is John, is Sonia on Zoom? Okay, would you ask Sonia if?
I don't get the next page.
Twenty-six twenty-four is supposed to be on the agenda, it's not on our written agenda, but I have the folder.
It's on the second page.
Is it on the second page?
It's cut off, Jim.
Oh, oh, it's a two-sided paper.
Oh.
No, I still, it got cut off at the top on mine.
Hold on, I, I'll, I'll find it.
You got it? Okay, so I can go ahead with, that's, okay, Sonia, stay quiet, or stay muted, or. That wasn't, I just, I wanted to give her a time if there was a problem, that's all.
Twenty-four Cove Street, right? Twenty-four Cove, okay. Richard Craden, right? Okay.
That's, that's not this one, though.
Right, correct. Go ahead.
Okay, it's not on our, it got cut off our, just want, don't want anybody to be left out. Here, this one should stay in here. Did I hand you guys anything yet? There you go. The zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June twelve, two thousand twenty-four, six thirty P M., room twenty, five twenty of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. zero two five seven one, Article six, Table six twenty-eight, and Article thirteen, Section thirteen fifty-two, and Section thirteen fifty-three, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Kimberly Lonas Schwab, care of Trinity Solar Inc. of twenty Patterson Brook Road, Wayham, Mass., proposing to install an external battery enclosure on the exterior of the property located at one fifty Pinehurst Drive, Wayham, Mass. This appears on map forty-six A, one lot seventy in the R thirty zoning district.
All right, you name an address, ma'am?
Kimberly Lonas Schwab, one fifty Pinehurst Drive, from Wayham.
All right, so want to explain to us what you're trying to do?
Sure, um, I had, I'm looking for a variance or a special permit regarding a previously permitted project that had a cease and desist order based on a, a neighborhood complaint.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to note that the complaint did not come from the abutter, um, it came from another neighbor who wrote that it was from the abutter without their permission and without their agreement in the complaint, just for the record, and there's a letter from my abutter attesting to that.
Anybody could complain in the town?
Oh, I know, but, but he sent in the complaint in their name.
Ah, oh, okay.
Without their permission and without their agreement.
Well, here we are now, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, anyway, the bottom line is, in, in the investigation of the complaint, um, it was determined that we were indeed across the property line to our abutter. Our abutter, um, said that she didn't care, and we should, because, because the building was already constructed, but because, after speaking to the commissioner, even though she, she wanted the building to stay as is, and we couldn't do that because it did actually breach the property line. So, we're here today to try and propose a shortening of that enclosure and a reconfiguration based on the plans that you have in front of you, so it will be completely off of her property line. Um, there is, in her letter, she has voiced support for that, as have four other abutters that, all, all the neighbors that completely surround our property, and all of those letters should be in your packets.
Uh, now, on these plans, what are you trying to build?
Um, we, we have, we installed solar panels on our, our house, and we have a Tesla storage battery, and the.
And where is the battery?
Where?
Where is it on the, is it out?
Um, it's, it is this little, it's.
Oh, that.
It's in the shed that they constructed on this side of the house, so the, the dark part of that structure is across the property line.
Oh, okay.
And the light, yes.
It's labeled existing encroaching shed to be removed?
It's actually to be shortened, because it's connected to the one that's next to it.
You're gonna move it, not remove it?
It's gonna shorten, it's gonna shorten it, and there will be an additional three feet behind it on my property to make up the space that they need between.
And it's going in the area that's labeled new three point five foot by six foot battery enclosure of point four feet off property line?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna move it in your property?
Uh, yes.
All right. Commissioner, so that requires a variance, right? But you show in here it's an existing nonconforming, she, she will be allowed if we feel not so detrimental with the special permit?
Be a special permit for, right, front and side setback.
From the front and side? Okay. All right, uh, Troy?
No questions.
Where do you get that, huh?
It's, you can have it, it's in the plan, but that's right, take it.
Veronica?
No comment.
Jimmy?
I think I get it, I'm okay. I know the neighborhood.
Uh, okay. You, the new shed is gonna be like point four feet of the property line? Where are you gonna put the battery, like about five inches?
It's in the, the, I, the regulations for this particular solar company that I was, that they, that I, I was told was that they have to have three feet in front of the battery, and so that's how the shed, I think, got, got to be too long.
Yeah.
So, we're just turning the batteries the other direction and adding a piece so that the three feet would be coming inside the shed, so it's all completely enclosed inside the shed, but it will be in a different orientation so that we can meet those regulations.
All right, uh, Rich?
So, I did go by yesterday, um, I did speak with, I believe, your daughter, and I didn't, hope I didn't get everybody all worked up by knocking on the door.
She just doesn't.
But I just wanted to say that they, it very tight over there, and I, when I mean very tight, these two buildings are tight. And what type of battery is this that's in there?
It's a Tesla storage battery.
So.
Jim?
It's called a power wall.
Yeah.
Power wall, but, I mean, so we're looking at lithium ion, probably?
Yeah, all of them, all those Tesla batteries are.
Well, you know what happens when those catch on fire? You gotta, can't put water on them, you're on the water.
We actually, um, when, when we went through conservation, the Conservation Department said that this would have been approved, that there's not a regulation against this, and there's plenty of them that are installed, and that it would have been approved ahead of time.
All right.
And we did get approved through conservation.
Yeah, we're, we're not the conservation.
Oh, I know, I just wanted to give that bit of information because of the water way.
How, how far your neighbor is, Jonathan Crawford, to your left, how far is the house from that shed, from that battery?
The house is setback.
Like where your deck is? Like, more like where your deck is?
Yes. Their kitchen, their kitchen window, their, their, the front of their house begins at the back, uh, further back than the back of my house, so.
Oh, okay. So, they're far from that, where the battery gonna be stored, about thirty feet?
We put it as far forward as we could, yeah, it's, it's very, very far from, from their actual dwelling. There's a big parking lot, and then there's a yard, and then their, their dwelling.
Okay. Anyone on the public want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against this matter? Hear none?
In the four, the fours, there should be five letters of support in your packet.
There's four letters of support, five, let the record shows, there's five letters of support for this project. All right, uh, any board questions before we close? Hear none? All right, let's close.
Motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Do I have a second? Hearing none? All right, let's close.
Motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Do I have a second?
I don't have much for the battery fire away. Yesterday, they're right on top of mine. I can't open it up anymore. I'm gonna get rid of the fence. There's not a substantial long distance.
Do I have 150 Pinehurst? Do I have a second on this closing?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich? Closing for closing?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, we close. Now... Okay. And this matter, how does the board... Rich is right here. You wanna look at it? Just give us a second.
Sure.
This is the neighbor's house. That's where the battery's going. That's her house. The battery's going right here and that's the neighbor's house. So that is like 30, 40 feet. If some explosion or fire...
There's a bigger queue of that on the street there.
Ah, okay. All right. And that storage is right on that front, right? Right? Right there?
Right against the street.
Yeah. All right. Okay. And the house on the... All right. So how does the board wanna go for? Do you wanna give a relief on 1353 and act on it as a special permit?
That'd be my preference. So moved.
1352? On a 1352? So we have a motion to act on it based on section 1352, correct? Paul, 1352, right?
Yep.
Right? To act on it as a special permit? So second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Nay.
Nay. And myself is aye. It's a special permit. Now, the wishes on the special permit?
That was a... That was a nay, not a abstain, correct?
410. Richard, no. On the special permit? Now, on the special permit, the wishes?
I move to approve as requested.
Yeah. We have a Jim. Motion to grant according to plan stand by Ronald Tubman dated February 20, 2024, and by the solar company, the plans dated... Where's the plan?
I took them back already. Put them in the master file. You wanna...
Dated...
Oh, yeah. You got it, the little one?
I can't see it.
Yeah, that's all right. We'll get this one back.
Solar Energy one says February 20, 24, right?
The plans...
Solar Energy, what was it dated?
6/19/23.
6/19...
That's the drawing date.
Is that true?
They had... Yeah. This has been going on since last August. But they had to redo the plans with the new structure and that was dated 2/20/24. That's the latest one that you have.
Battery enclosure location 1424, January 4th, 2024. Battery enclosure location...
That's the one?
That's it, right there.
All right. So January 4th, 2024, and the surveyor on... What did I just say? February 20, 2024. So special permit with the findings substantially not detrimental to the neighborhood? Motion by Jim, do I have a second on that?
Motion to grant.
Oh, motion to... Second.
Veronica, second, is it?
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. Rich?
Nay. No.
Nay. So 410, it carries. You're good. Thank you. All right. Next victim. 26-24. Mr. Craden. And it's 24 Cove Street.
Okay. Let's get this one... Let's get 2524. Everything in on 2524?
Richard and Audrey Craden. Just gotta give us a minute.
Get his...
Richie?
Anything from that last one?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 26-24 for an appeal of the building inspector notice of violation per the requirements of Massachusetts State Building Code to Richard E. and Audrey Craden Care of Dennis J. Conroy, attorney of 245 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. for the property located at 24 Cove Street, Wareham, Mass. This appears on map 2, lot 264 in the OVR zoning district. Onset Village Residential Zoning District.
Well, name and address, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dennis Conroy, 245 Main Street, Wareham. I'm appearing tonight in behalf of Richard and Audrey Craden. With me, to my right, is Jared Kent. And Audrey Craden is seated to his right.
All right. So what's the case here? What's the matter?
Mr. Chairman, Richard and Audrey Craden are the owners of a single-family residence located at 24 Cove Street onset, which is in the process of being renovated pursuant to a special permit granted by the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals issued January 11th, 2022 as case number 43-22, pursuant to a building... and pursuant to a building permit issued by the Wareham Building Department dated July 25th, 2023. Renovation of the residence pursuant to the building permit commenced on or about July 26th, 2023 and continued until approximately December 14th, 2023, when the building inspector, George Stewart, following a framing inspection of the property, issued a verbal stop work order stating that the work being done constituted a substantial improvement of the property as defined by FEMA regulations. Work was suspended on the project and the homeowner's contractor, Jared Kent, subsequently met with the building inspector without resolution of the FEMA issue. Work stoppage continues as of the present day. On April 1st, 2024, Paul Turner, building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer of the town of Wareham, issued a written notice of violation based on the determination of the Wareham Building Department that a substantial improvement as defined by FEMA has taken place. And as a result, the entire structure needed to be elevated to meet the requirements of section R322 of the FEMA regulations as stated in the notice of violation filed therewith. The applicant and homeowners, Richard and Audrey Craden, by this appeal seek a review by the Board of Appeals of the building department's determination that a substantial improvement as defined by FEMA has taken place. The applicant maintains that the building department has not properly interpreted and applied the guidelines set by FEMA for the determination of whether or not the work that has been undertaken by the homeowners constituted a substantial improvement as defined by FEMA. On April 1st, the applicant, through counsel, sent a letter to the building commissioner with additional information to explain and rebut statements contained in the notice of violation and requested a meeting with the commissioner. The commissioner declined to meet with the applicant. By letter dated April 22nd, the applicant also provided an additional letter containing information from the assessors' office, which increased the market value of the property before the commencement of the renovation to an amount sufficient to increase the FEMA threshold, 50/50 threshold, to $109,000, which is greater than the cost of the project. And we've included cost information about the project. The applicant's request that the Board of Appeals reverse the building department's determination that a substantial improvement as defined by FEMA has taken place and order the applicant's building permit that was issued on July 25th, 2023, be reinstated and allowing the applicant to complete the improvement of their residence. This appeal is authorized by Chapter 48, Section 8, and Article 14, Section 1432 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham. I don't know what the... what the board's familiarity with FEMA regulations is. Before I embarked on this case, I wasn't aware of the FEMA regulations.
But I wanna interrupt you. Before we go forward and waste your time, this is not our jurisdiction if it's a FEMA violation.
Excuse me?
That's not our jurisdiction if it's a FEMA. If they doing over 50% of construction of the value of the house, not the land, and you violating, you have to appeal to FEMA, not to us.
Well, FEMA doesn't have a... an office in Wareham. The way FEMA and the National Flood and Fire Insurance Program works is if the town participates in the program, the National Flood Insurance Program, it has to appoint an official to represent it in the town. And... And that's what the building department does in Wareham. They're acting in behalf of FEMA and they're making a determination...
No, 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 no. I want... If I may, we follow the FEMA guidelines. We don't make... The commissioner cannot make rules and determina... He follow the guidelines. That's how his determination. He can't say, okay, I'll waive... I'll give it to you. I don't give it to you. The guidelines are clear. If you do over 50% of the construction within a 12-months period, you in violation, then you have to comply. You gotta go and stealth or raise the elevation, whatever the case is. And like I said, we don't have the jurisdiction. Even if we give it to you, the commissioner don't have to give you that permit. We can't overturn his decision. That's not our jurisdiction to overturn it.
Well, the... The building department makes a determination as to what the FEMA threshold is. And it looks at two things. It looks at the market value of the building and it looks at the market value of the improvement.
I understand. Totally right. You're totally right.
Those are... Those are judgment calls by the building inspector. FEMA doesn't come in here and make that determination. The local authority makes that decision. And in this case, they didn't apply the FEMA regulations correctly. The FEMA regulate... So... The value of this building, according to the assessors' records, as of July 1st, 2024...
So if I may...
Was $218,000.
219, yeah.
So that's... So the half of that is the... is the FEMA substantial improvement threshold. Now, our builder maintain... Mr. Kent is here today to explain how he comes to his valuation of the improvement, which he puts at $106,000, which is $3,000 below the FEMA improvement threshold. So now... Now what? So the FEMA has... Puts forth a desk book and they have rules and they circulate. We can get them online. I got them online to see how is this determination made? It's not casually made. And the contractor, a licensed contractor, has authority to issue a... an opinion as to what the value of the improvements are. And he... And he has provided the building department with... And they're not part of my submission already, but I do have... I do have them here. What... But Mr. Kent, and he met... After meeting with the building department in January, at their request, he provided backup. He provided invoices. He provided a list of all the materials and expenses that he has made. And he has determined that the value of the building when it is completed... The value of the improvement is $106,000. It's a data-generated decision.
Okay. What is the zoning violation that we can act upon? What is the zoning violation in that? If this board acts on a zoning violation, not on a FEMA violation?
This board acts... Anyone who has... is harmed by a decision of the... of the building department has a right to come before this board concerning that. It doesn't... It's not limited to zoning.
Exactly.
It's limited to...
To any department, any... If you are aggrieved by his decision, maybe it's a conservation issue. This is a FEMA issue. Even if we give it to you, you can't go out and build it. The town will be fined hardly. Harshly. If we grant... We can't even grant it to you. Even if you say, I wanna go build it, FEMA will not agree.
The desk book, it doesn't agree with you. They say that if the owner does not agree with a determination by the department, he... They can file an appeal with the local Board of Appeals or Selectment or whoever it is. That's what it says, right in the guidebook that they distribute.
I have...
I have, you know, I've got copies of it.
I've done a lot of FEMA.
All the members.
I've appealed... It's hardly believed to not to... I can't believe that they don't answer you. I've done a lot of modifications for plan and revised elevations with FEMA and they always answer you. And your engineer can really easily get in touch with them to rectify the problem.
We have.
All right. May I? You name another...
Jared Kent, I'm the contractor on behalf of Rick and Audrey. So I think this issue, I think it's just a disagreement in the amount of money being spent, I believe, between myself and the building department.
Fine. But this is not the place to argue it. Do you understand?
I don't understand. I apologize.
Let's... Let me make you a simple...
Our project is not complete either.
All right. Let me explain to you something easier. If you build them close to the wetland, where do you go? Conservation or zoning?
So they've been through these steps already and that would...
Okay, let...
It's the costs of interior construction.
If you wanna build closer to the wetland, which board you go to?
Conservation.
Conservation. When you are in this matter with numbers for FEMA, the proper place to appeal is FEMA.
We've been there, sir.
Right. So but this is not...
No, they referred us back to the town.
Not to the zoning board. We don't have that jurisdiction.
Back to the building department.
We don't have that jurisdiction. I can't... How can I explain to you?
I don't...
We don't have the jurisdiction to override FEMA.
That's not what we're asking for.
What are you asking?
FEMA referred us back to the building department because there is...
The building department. You appealed them at the... You appealed the commissioner to FEMA, not to us. We here to grant you setback height. We here to grant you FAR floor covering, land coverage. We cannot grant you a FEMA relief on number of costs. This is not our jurisdiction. Again, I've said it 50 times.
Under Section 1432 of the zoning bylaw, an individual can appeal to the Board of Appeals if he is an aggrieved person by a decision of the permit granting authority. Who's the permit granting authority?
The building commissioner.
So your building zoning bylaw says that you have authority. You may not use it very often or ever, but you have the authority. And then in the FEMA desk book, it says, "An applicant for a permit may appeal a decision order or determination that was made by the local official." This occurs most often if there is ambiguous language This occurs most often if there is ambiguous language in a code or regulation that leads to the different interpretation. Typically, appeals are heard by a board designated to hear such cases, which may go by a variety of names, Board of Appeals, Board of Adjustments, et cetera. In some small communities, the function may be handled by the jurisdiction's governing body, the town council, the board of selectmen, et cetera." They administer, they want the local government to administer this decision. It's in black and white. FEMA authorizes the town to act in its behalf on this question. And then it submits, you know, what's the building department supposed to consider when they're making this decision? And then there's a stipulation in, in the guidebook or the desk book that sets all the rules for FEMA.
Okay.
And it says that the contractor, if he's licensed, that's sufficient to render an opinion concerning the cost. Now, he has to specify that. He can't just pull it out of the sky, and that's what he has done here.
All right, let me ask you a question. If FEMA regulation says that elevation in certain spot has to be at 17, can the zoning board give you a 16?
No, that, this is just, just on the question of substantial improvement or substantial damage. That's a unique, it's a unique little puzzle and problem that the, that determination has to be made at the local authority. We, we're not asking to change the flood elevation, and no, you're right. There's, this board doesn't have any control over the flood elevation, but it does have jurisdiction over this question, which is, which is very important. Because if, because if you don't have, if you're deemed to be not a substantial improvement by showing that the value of your improvement is less than 50%, then you don't have to elevate the house. This house, you know, we, contractor estimates it'll cost $200,000 to elevate this house to the flood plain. It's only a $100,000 kitchen improvement. So it turns it into a $300,000 issue. Now, so that's the penalty here. That's why we're here, because it's so important to the homeowner. Now, and this, the permit, the building permit was issued. This case, I don't know whether you were familiar with, with this case, less than, about a year ago, you granted a special permit to allow a very small modification of this, of the footprint. Maybe added about 80 feet of feet to square off one side and put a new entrance in. And I don't know whether any of you have had an opportunity to look at the building. You know, in our materials that we filed, we filed before and after pictures, and I think it's.
Yeah, I saw it. It looks beautiful. No question asked.
It's a very tasteful, well-thought-out improvement. But this issue, it is for you to decide to be, you know, is, is the value, because if the value of the improvement is as Mr. Kent says, $106,000, then this is not a substantial improvement, and the job can be finished as it is. Interestingly, in the middle of this project, before construction started, the town increased the valuation of this house, the building, from I think $192,000 to $219,000 effective July 1, 2023, and construction didn't start until July 25th or August 1st. So we're going by, the first number that we have to determine is what's the value of the house? Because 50%, 50% of that building value is our threshold. And actually, when Mr. Jared, Mr. Kent filed an application for a building permit in May of last year, and at that time, he sought a permit to construct much more than he's, he has in fact been working on. Because he had, he didn't know about FEMA when he filed this. And the initial building application was filed, and it was rejected because it was for $175,000 worth of work, and it included a new HVAC system, an expansive concrete pad underneath this, this building, and some other expensive items. When, when he was told by the building inspector that he was over the FEMA threshold, he went back to Mr. and Mrs. Creighton and said, "We've gotta shrink this project down, and we gotta take stuff out of it because it's too valuable." And Mr., so after he did that, they decided what they needed and what they, what they didn't need, and he came back in with a revised application for a, for a building permit that would be under the FEMA threshold. He filed that. The building inspector didn't ask him for any backup information or anything. He allowed the, he granted the permit, and the permit was granted in July, and Mr. Kent started construction, and about 80% of the job is done now. It's five weeks' work left to complete the job, and.
Why don't we hear from, okay, go ahead, Rich.
I'm hearing both sides. I hear the frustration. I hear what's going on. I do hear the fact that he's gotta come to somebody, and we are the people. I say, we gotta continue this. Let's dig into it and find out if there is really the truth to this. Because what I'm hearing sounds like they don't have a leg to stand on, which I find that very hard to believe. I think that we can at some point. I believe that if he's coming to us, there's nobody for him to turn to, then I think that we could entertain it. But as of right now, I'm confused, and I'm not making anything.
What I'd like to add to my brother, board member, is that I'd like to see Attorney Conroy, our chair, and town council have a separate meeting, and the commissioner, if it's appropriate, and determine, are we the board, are we the authority to make this decision? And if that's the determination, then we can make a decision with confidence. If the, if that meeting yields, no, we're not the board, then we save everybody a lot of time and get you going in the right direction.
Veronica, what do you think?
I agree with Jim's comments and Troy's.
I do as well.
Let me, I'm gonna ask the commissioner.
I agree as well.
Let me explain something to you. Say your wishes come true, and we grant it to you. And the commissioner still insists not to give you the permit. It's a FEMA, and purists and desists. We can't, even if we override him, okay, even if we override him, you cannot keep building if he believes it's a FEMA violation. Now, let me ask him, let's see his opinion. Maybe I'm wrong, but let's, commission, just put us conclusion of the matter, or like, show us the picture, how you see it.
So it's a very, it's been going on for a year and a half, so I'm not gonna get into the details. What I am gonna say is the notice of violation was on a building code.
Which is?
On a building code. And it cited determination of substantially improved or substantially damaged existing buildings and flood hazards, and then a narrative of what happened, and et cetera, et cetera. This department has determined that a substantial improvement is taking place in the property is required that the entire structure meet the requirements of Section R 322, flood-resistant construction. Please reapply for a new building permit with the appropriate documentation to meet the requirements of Section R 322, flood-resistant construction. If you are aggrieved by my determination in accordance with 780 C M R, Section R 113.1 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 143, Section 100, you can appeal to the BCA Building Code of Appeals Board within 45 days of the date of this letter. That has happened. So they did file for an appeal, and we spoke with the board last week.
Right, with the building code. Is everybody on board? So there's a building code violation.
And at that time, we did come to a resolution, so that the board could not say that we had enough information to say it was a substantial, and they said that they did not have enough information to say it wasn't. What they, the applicant was instructed to do was to fill out a fourth FEMA form and work it out with the building department. That's how it was left in the appeal of last week.
Okay, so it started with a building code violation, so this is not the proper board to appeal it?
Well, the building code violation includes the determination that, under FEMA. So we're appealing that determination. It created, it supposedly created the building code violation. But first, the threshold piece is the determination, is what's the value of the improvement. And Mr. Turner's point is well taken, but, you know, we, this, it's regrettable that we're here. It's regrettable that we, we were engaged in another, another appeal. And this, when this came in my office, I said, this is something we can sit down and resolve, and I sent two letters asking to sit down and resolve this with the building department. You know, the Creitons, they're not looking to flip this house. They've lived, this house has been in the family for 50 years. They wanna retire and sell their house up in the, up in the city and come down and live in Wareham where they've spent summers. This is all heartbreaking, the whole, and they can't undo. The house is almost done. And Mr. Kent tells me that it's gonna be a nightmare if anybody tries to get equipment in there to raise this house. It's, it shouldn't be raised, and.
How much you have completed so far? 80%?
80%. He spent, spent about $80,000 of the, of the $100,000 is spent.
We will definitely gonna continue it, but I am, I'm very sure of our decision that we can't make a decision. It's a FEMA, FEMA gotta decide whether the numbers are right or wrong, not us. I'll get to you, sir. My, my recommendation, just stop where you are and wait the 12 months.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yes, let me, let me hear from, when I come forward, state your, you gotta come in there, sir.
Richard, you have to come to a microphone.
Have a seat. State your name and address.
Richard Creighton, 37 Fillmore Lane, Wallpole. We did go to FEMA.
Yes.
And they gave us the approval.
A verb, a verbal approval?
Verbal approval. The town didn't like what they had to say, so they called in their guy. Their guy said, no, it's, it's a violation.
Who's that guy? The FEMA guy?
Our FEMA guy.
The towns guy.
First, our FEMA guy, what was his?
One other time, mem, if you want, you could speak, but you gotta state your name.
Randall Domino.
He's from FEMA.
Flood Management FEMA, gave us the approval, called the town, told the town and said, go ahead with it.
Yeah.
The town didn't like what he had to say, quote from Mr. Stewart.
That's the FEMA guy.
Turn my head. No, the building inspector. He said, the FEMA guy, Mr. Domino, Randall Domino, said to Mr. George Stewart, "They asked me to turn my head." This is FEMA, okay? This is flood management FEMA. So the town didn't like what they had to say, so they called in their guy.
Who's their guy?
Um, who's your guy?
Mr. Eric Carlson?
Carlson, and he's a conservation. He's not even part of FEMA.
That's not, there's no.
Sir, let him answer. You asked a question.
We keep saying FEMA. So FEMA is a regulatory department that doesn't have any enforcement agents. We're the enforcement agents.
Okay.
Right here.
Finished.
I am.
Right.
I'm the floodplain manager for Wareham.
Okay.
Mr. Carlson works for the Department of Conservation for the state, but he's in, he represents FEMA in a quasi-relationship. He's our person that we get our guidance from. So you, that man, I'm trying to think now, this has gone on so long. You have an arbitrary phone call from someone in Washington that says, go ahead and build your project in Wareham. That's, there was never a email. We tried to call back that person. We could never even get that person on the phone. So I don't know if that person even exists. So this is really a.
No, I, Paul, listen.
Sir, one other time, you gotta take everybody, I'll give you your chance. Keep going.
I really think, last week, it was resolved with the building, the appeals board, for him, the Mr. Kent, to come in and fill out a new FEMA form. And when he does that, I'm gonna sit down with him, I don't care if it takes three, four, or five hours, I'm gonna fill out the form. He's gonna show me each, each receipt, and we'll fill it in, and I'll question him. Does that receipt include labor and material, all material, and add it up? I'm the one, FEMA gives me the control to look at a project. I've developed for 25 years, I built 100 houses, I know my prices. Mr. Stewart, he's also been in business for 30, 35 years. He knows his prices. So there's been a lot of discrepancies with Mr. Kent's substantial improvements. The reason I didn't speak with Mr. Conroy in my office is because I eliminated all, I wanted everything in writing with Mr. Kent. It went on and on at the public counter. This was said, this was said, and just a lot of variables. That's the word I'm gonna use. Lot of variables kept being said. The original, when he first came to the building department.
What I'm thinking, when you sit down with receipts piece by piece, do we have jurisdiction to overturn your decision?
I don't believe so. I do.
That's the, that's what I'm getting to.
I am, yeah.
Keep going.
I'll give you a quick overrun of the reason why this has ended here. Mr. Kent had no idea about substantial improvement. He came and submitted a building permit to rehab the entire first floor, $176,000. Any contract that comes to the counter puts 176, it's usually low. It's probably a $200,000 job, but that's a, as soon as he was informed that it's way over, Mr. Stewart said, why don't you just do the kitchen this year, wait your 12 months, finish the rest of the house? Came back, lowered the price down to 96, or whatever, whatever arbitrary number. Received a new permit for the kitchen only. The rest of the area is not to be touched, left as is. Right on the permit, it's spelt out, somewhere in this packet, we could find it, but basically it's spelt out. The project went on for six months. Mr. Stewart was called out for a frame inspection. When he got there, the entire first floor, 75% was gutted. A bathroom was added that wasn't on the permit. What Mr. Stewart, in his head, said was, it looked like what was on the original $175,000 permit was done on the $96,000 permit. So he came in with Mr. Kent, why'd you, what's up with the bathroom? Why did you proceed, right, it's right on the permit, why did you proceed to these other rooms? Then it went on and on, coming to the counter. This costs this, this costs this, this one gets changed, this one goes from 35 to 55. Everything, just a big shell game, is what I thought.
But all these things, whether they're right or wrong. We don't have jurisdiction. There's no zoning violation.
They were instructed by the board to come and see me and work it out.
You understand?
So. You said building code, which is not us.
Right. I'm gonna pass it by the board again. So everything happens inside this house. There's no zoning violation that we can answer. Do you get what I'm saying? But let me give a chance to the board to give their thoughts before we go forward. Troy.
I think that it's all on Paul. I don't think we have any jurisdiction.
Veronica.
Unfortunately, you know, when, unfortunately for, you know, the applicant, as soon as the commissioner said that building code XYZ, and started talking about FEMA and the regulation, that means it falls under building code. That's like saying that the code is you have to have R21 on the walls, but this zoning board can say, nope, you don't have to have R21 on the walls.
We can't do that.
We don't do that.
We can't. We don't have the power.
It's out of our jurisdiction. As soon as it becomes a code, it's not us.
Jimmy.
I think they need to, there was some form that they need to go item by item. I think that needs to happen.
Richard.
Now, after hearing what Mr. Turner explained the whole thing, I'm gonna say that I don't think that it's our jurisdiction.
Let me, let me reiterate on something.
Excuse me?
Let me reiterate on something. If this board, which is, doesn't look, they're gonna, let's say they give you, they overturn his decision, he still don't have to give you that permit because our decision don't make sense to him. It doesn't enforce him to give you the permit. Just like Veronica said, if the wall insulation says R21, and we tell you, yeah, go ahead for R20, our decision means nothing.
Your zoning bylaw, I read, I've read the provision in it that says that determination, a decision made by the building inspector.
Regarding zoning, not building code or FEMA.
It doesn't say that. I understand you're, it's not limited, because the zoning by, or the town, the zoning bylaw does not say just. the, the town, the zoning bylaw does not say just zoning. It says building and zoning. It never comes before your board, but it, but the authority is in the zoning, is in Wareham zoning bylaw for this board to, to act. And, and, and no, the, the, you know, I brought here, prepared to, to cite chapter and verse of the, of the FEMA guidelines. And, and, you know, and I, it's not fair to you guys, and, and it's, it's a difficult task. But FEMA is supposed to be administered at the local level. They, they empower the, the, the local official, but they don't give him the last say. It's not like he's Solomon and says, "This is what it is." There's an appeal to the local board that, that is you guys.
Counselor, counsel. I, I know for a fact that the five of us here don't love anything more than this couple, this couple have their home. Believe me, we'd love them to move in it. We'd love them to have it. The question is, the, the answer is to your question, you have to work it out with the commissioner. Like I said, if he's not happy, even, like I said, we voted this thing. He's not gonna give it to you. Josh, did you want to say something?
I would. I think the question being asked here is, is Paul's interpretation of the valuation of the project correct? Which he has made the determination that it's over 50%, and you would be the correct board to appeal it to. That would require you guys to look at Paul's evaluation of what was done and, you know, disagree with him.
We have the jurisdiction to, to look at the value?
To appeal Paul's determination.
For the value?
Correct.
That hasn't been done yet.
I think you should continue this hearing.
Of course, it's gonna continue.
I'm, I'm gonna talk to town council tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I think you'll have a better understanding of this.
Now, should they get together and go item by item, so we have something solid next time?
Oh, I think you need to.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think you need their determination of the value, and I think you need Paul's determination.
Who's the contractor? Sir, is it possible you could come to the commissioner and sit item by item? We'll ask council, we'll ask town council, because we don't want to give you a decision that's useless.
Right.
And again, we'd love this lady and her husband, whoever is the couple, to have their home. Believe me, we're all here for that. But we want to do it right, you know? So why don't you sit with the commissioner tomorrow or beginning of next week? We'll ask town council, and we'll see how can we rectify this matter. And believe me, let's say town council says it is our jurisdiction, we'll be more than happy to grant it to you, but I, let's hope he says that. How's that? Does that make sense? Before we go forward, anyone in this, in this, with the public want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against this matter?
I think they should go forward and, and finish the project.
You say, you have to come up, state your name.
My name's Gary Lerner.
No, you have to come up to a microphone. Sorry.
State your name and address.
Gary Lerner, Two Way Court Avenue.
And
They've been residents in
We all, we all grew up in it together.
Sorry, yeah, down, down further, right where your thumb is, up a little bit. There you go.
We, we all grew up in this neighborhood together. I think that they should finish this project, and let's get this over with.
I, I don't have doubts that this is a great project, and you grew up in everything, but we can, we can only do so much. You're asking us to do something that we can't do.
Well, let's
You know, and let's hope
It's time for everyone to get together, and let's get this thing done.
Exactly. Let's hope the answers come from council that we could do this, and we'll be more than happy to do so.
Okay.
All right? Is that fair for everybody?
Yes.
Does that make sense? Ma'am?
Yes.
Good with that? I'm sorry, it's, that's how it is, unfortunately. As you noticed, we give a lot of permits, and we'd be more, it, there's nothing against you, but sometimes that's how it is, unfortunately.
Well, the building inspector, Mr. Stewart, did go in and find that they seemed to be not doing what they were supposed to, so therein lies why we're here, right?
Right. So
They need to work it out with them, and then come to us.
So let's, so we're gonna continue this matter?
Just say one more thing.
Yeah, just state your name.
Audrey Creighton, 24 Cove Street in onset.
Okay.
I know that Mr. Turner is frustrated, it's, and I apologize for that, but I do and don't think that there was any malicious indications here. We've been out of the house a year and a half. It's inhabitable. We kept a whole side of the house for storage that's, hasn't even been touched. It's 900 square feet. It's a cottage in a family, and I understand the frustration, but I know how diligently everyone has tried to make this right, and now another step. I'm hoping that we can make an amendment.
Right. All we need, directions, and we're more than happy to make a decision. We just need the right direction that could work for you.
Thank you.
You understand? I mean, say we grant something, and you will not be able to insure that house for any way, anyway, if we, if the permit's wrong, if the, the grant we give you is wrong, you'll never be able to insure this house. But anyway, so let's continue this to the 26th. That gives enough time for everybody? Yeah. So that's two weeks from now, you will not be notified again, so just show up here, whoever listening, wanna, you will not be notified again. You have to be here on the 26th. So can we get a motion and continue?
So moved.
We have a motion to continue this matter, 26 dash 24, for 24 Cove Street till the June 26, 2024, by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So we'll see you on the 24.
24, 26.
On the 26th, and hopefully everything works out good.
You got anything to put in this folder there, mister?
Uh, okay. All right, buddy. Before we go anywhere, guys, we just, as you all know, on the Waterways.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
On the Waterways. You guys want to discuss, Commissioner, can you? Commissioner?
Aye.
Outside, please, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have a good night. Waterways, we have a land court date for June 26 at 9:30 a.m. before the Honorable Judge Robert Foster. And that is, it's gonna be a conference. So we should be at 9:30 a.m. We all subpoenaed, so
We have to show up?
26.
No, we gotta, we go online and, right, Josh? It's online, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I thought town council handled it for us.
I don't think, didn't we get subpoenaed, all of us?
I didn't get anything.
I didn't receive anything.
I got, I got handed something from
From who?
Sonia, when I was in the office.
Hand it to you.
Just a big pad of paper saying we were all being
Josh, can you find out, should we, if we should attend or not?
Yes, sir.
Or anybody else? Please. All right, that being said, can we get a
Is that a part of us to get paid? Thinking about my day?
No.
You get like $35 travel pay if you're a witness.
Sonia wants to make a comment.
Hi, Sonia. Thanks for ditching us tonight.
Oh, you're so welcome. Yes, I emailed all of you. You are all subpoenaed. There is a conference, a video conference on the 26th at 9:30. Check your emails, please.
So we all have to appear on Zoom?
The zoning board of appeals, correct?
Yeah.
The board.
That's what I thought.
And Nazee, we can probably set up a room at Town Hall if people feel like they want to attend there.
Yeah, maybe we'll come here.
9:30, the what?
9:30 a.m.
Yeah, there's, there's a Zoom link attached on that email.
The 26th.
Thank you, Sonia.
Our meeting is the 26th, right?
The, a meeting at night.
Meeting is the 26th, and this is the 25th?
No, 26.